Opening the Property Subcommittee meeting of March of May 3rd at 12:07. And you taking notes?
I will, yes.
Thank you so much. We called this meeting because we had two members at the last meeting and wanted to be able to see what we could do to get three to talk about the issues that were at hand. Counselor Cottiff had to be away as a result of bereavement and is in witness today. So, we should talk about a few of the issues and feel free to talk about the issues and decide whether or not we want to move forward. Minutes, I think we'll wait on until we're all together.
Okay, that's fine.
We had several items. The first one was the definitions of the role of the Committee. I guess, I had the sense that we wanted to define the role as widely as possible to encompass whatever roles might be appropriate at some point in the future. And it sounded like you were looking to that as the role of the Committee was supposed to have a role that was as wide as possible.
I like a clear job description.
Maybe we're not in the right business to have a clear job description.
Probably not the right company. But, I just appreciate that. I think it just makes a lot more sense, you know, with all those situations where, you know, if somebody was talking about like, "Boo, stop signing over 10." It's like, you know, that came under public safety one time and then not the next time for, you know, different reasons. So, I just like things to be clear. I think there should be a good process because I think, you know, just best practices, people understand like what the process is. So, you have to be clear about the process. So, this falls under this purview, this falls under that purview. You know? So, that's my only, I think as much detail as possible, but I'm an over-information person.
Okay. Yeah. And I think the ultimate authority is the Council can send whatever they want to whatever Committee they want by vote of the full Council. Despite the rules. Although I guess if we, that this is when we didn't have specific roles for the various Committees. So, that would be a matter to look at the rules again, I think, and decide whether or not the full Council could say, "Well, you know, usually we send this to Finance, but Finance is so old a burden of the budget right now that we're going to use a different Committee for this, these items because..." Or members, there could be two members. Sure, who knows what the particular reasons are.
Well, then just to have it be really clear, especially for City Hall, so that when requests come in or constituent questions come in, that they actually do make it to City Council. Because I think a lot of things come through and they don't even make it to us. You know, that they get handled outside of, you know, the checks and balances that are supposed to happen. So that if we're really clear-
That's sad to hear, if that's happening.
If we're really clear about what the purview of the Committee is-
Right.
-then it would be clear to everybody else that if these kind of documents or these kind of questions or those materials come through, then they do go.
They go to City Council and sure, that certainly makes sense. Do you want to take a peek at the actual definition? I know you-
Yeah, totally.
-have actual hard copies right here, so-
Yeah, if you want any of the hard copies, that's fine.
I don't have, you know, none of us have them. So, let's see if we can look at what we have, because I know you've done some work on this. I had an email back there. If you'd like, certainly feel free to start talking about the subject, since you may have those issues off the topic.
I feel pretty confident that I gave you, you know, the information that I was speaking about. I can pull it up if you'd like.
If you wouldn't mind, then we could both work from the same copy, I think.
Sure.
Okay. If you want to resend that, that would be helpful.
Um, sure.
To the JPDChampton.org address.
I'm sending my code.
Oh, good, thank you. Not yet, but it should be coming momentarily, I'm sure.
It should.
Okay. I'm going to go back to here. Too many open files at the same time. It didn't come through yet. Send it to JPDChampton.org. Not here yet.
Sorry, it's like sent two emails at the same time. We texted each other.
Not here yet.
Like, I can sit here and work too.
Okay. Can switch gears for a moment. Wait for that, if that's okay.
Sure.
Here is, we had also had the issue of an inventory of property of the city. And as part of that, here is what the assessors have for municipal properties. And there also is a link on open space, which I'll send you.
This is real property.
This is real property, yes.
Just little things that we have.
That's, um, it could be, could be a variety of-
Which of the columns mean? They're not labeled.
They're not labeled. Let me see if the new one that was sent to me has some labeled columns, because I just got one. It did come through. That... I don't know if we're going to be able to open up. Okay. Let me see. See if they're labeled.
I'm particularly interested in the second-
Yep, some of them are labeled here. I'm going to, let me see if I can save this one and send it to you. I can, the second column-
I'm going to assume it's money?
Well, first one was land value, I believe. It says 196.1.
Okay.
Land value. Then there's building value. And total value for municipal property. I'm going to save it in a different format.
The numbers in total value do-
Should total-
Yep, they appear to-
The two columns.
Yeah.
The two columns. And then it is a book and page reference to the deed, to the registry of deeds. No, yours doesn't, the one I'm sending, the one I'm going to be sending.
No, that looks like book and page, these first two.
That was a map and parcel.
Map and parcel.
Map and parcel, which you must refer to the assessor's records. Let me see if I can send it off to the map. Again, Hayes, JPDChampton.org. So, what we're trying to do is to get a sense of what municipal properties there are. So, forwarding this to you should be able to have, it should go with the attachment from the city, right? If it's in the... I want, no, it says no attachment.
Why does it say City of East Hampton, East Hampton City?
Uh, don't know.
City of what?
City of East Hampton, yeah.
Right, but it says East Hampton at the beginning, and City of East Hampton.
East Hampton City. Different ways of the documents being recorded. Why-
But that's the thing is, if you don't do the data entry cleanly, you end up with corrupted data.
You end up with more, right. When you go to the registry of deeds, you'll see that sometimes. Sometimes you'll, in the old days, you'd see your inhabitants of East Hampton. And hopefully all of that's been-
So, there's no standards?
Well, there are standards and they're getting much better.
Yeah.
Much, much better. Yeah, that's funny, it's not showing up here.
I will copy and paste the whole document, if that makes any sense.
If I, I will get it to you. Let me see, the Public Committee Rules XLS. Sorry, this is still all on the new computer to me.
Oh, really?
Relatively, relatively new municipal properties, okay. Send. Let's see if that makes it. Looks like it did. And I have the link from you.
Oh, okay, I was going to send it to you again. Is the link working for you?
Well, let's see.
I will plan to be ready to go.
Eh, I got it.
Okay.
Deodiful.
Great.
And you, before too long, you should get the Excel file for properties that are listed in our assessor's office.
Yep, got it.
Which we can take a look at and see if they're, and compare that to what's on the open space.
I've never met Lori Stewart.
She did come before the Council, maybe-
I skipped that because we didn't have a, I didn't feel comfortable hiring somebody without like, it was like, do we have like employee name, all the contact, we have any of those things, like-
Okay, so she came before the Council and then she, I think she may have come before the appointment day, on the day of appointment, just-
Yeah, I couldn't pick her out of a police lineup, I really don't.
Oh, she's right down, she's a nice lady.
Yeah, I know, I've heard she's doing a good job. In fact, only, we should have like an employee review at some point, right? Six months?
That would certainly seem to, there's been a six-month review, I think it's occurred. And I know personnel had invited everyone to come in and look at the, another topic.
Right, sure.
Maybe we shouldn't-
Yep.
-get into that here. I mean, certainly to say that the person's here, we can go meet her, it's great that she provided us this information, but to go any further-
Gotcha.
...not to, not to come. Okay, so, you had added areas of responsibilities. Do you want to? The Council doesn't really have any properties, so to undertake the overall management of Councils, but the city's property could be, it would be meant to include there, I'm not At the stage of acquisition-
To undertake the overall management of the Council's property at the stage of acquisition or disposal and oversee legislative tasks related to the above, I think that makes sense. When we talk about like getting rid of one of the schools, that's when we would like, you know, be selling the Parsons Street School, which the Property Committee was very much involved in, how that deal was structured. If we were looking to buy land to like build a new school, then obviously the Property Committee would be very much involved in how that was going to go, because you need to have a representative, fully so the constituents there at the table, so.
Right, and according to statute, if I'm not mistaken, almost everything over $25,000 in real property for at least has to be a process involving the Council and by statute.
Okay.
So-
I don't know the numbers specifically, but that makes sense to me.
Yeah, so I-
Do you think that needs to be said?
I don't... To me, it's said above when we talk about, in the first paragraph. That's to me, I understood.
And the $25,000 makes sense with real property, but I don't know if it makes sense with personal property.
Right, and I'm not sure that statutes refer to any role for the Council on the purchase of personal property by state statute.
Right.
But, there may be, certainly if they were, like, let's say for example, you were to have an issue and you would say, "Hey, please, you know, I think people are buying too much paper in the city. And it's not being done properly and..." I don't know if it's properly, but we could do it more efficiently or have a different way of doing it, or we should be part of it. And we wanted to bring that to Property Committee. We certainly could, under this, under the first paragraph, under such other, other matters as may be referred. And discuss it here.
Does Property Committee include assets?
There is, I spoke with the mayor briefly, it was her opinion that there was no role, particular role for assets, nothing that the administration had to come to Council for regarding the acquisition of assets through, except for the normal budget process, the normal budgeting process, which would make sense. You'd bring a, an item for purchase or supplemental appropriation.
Right.
Which the mayor is going to come to the Council to buy a vehicle, for example.
Right. But what about like objects that are over $12,000, where like she has to put a bid up to contract or something like that? Is there any sort of oversight from the City Council, some of the things like that?
On the bidding process of contracts.
Or purchase of assets.
Yeah, purchase, yeah, right, I understand. As far as I know, there has been no previous rule. On contracts, it's been the mayor's authority, the mayor's legislative, administrative authority.
Right.
We have budgetary authority. Hey, hello?
Oh, cheers, thank you.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing? Um, so-
That's very good.
Thanks. Trying to be efficient.
Yes.
So, if you look at something like the website, websites an asset.
Okay, the website's an asset and certainly the public face of the city, yes.
Right. So, I mean, clearly as a City Council, I would prefer that we had like a seat at the table there, some public input, that types. And the fact that this was under 12, would it put some number? I forget, 10,000 per asked, God, did they-
I think, I think the issue here was that the bids were trying to be $10,000 and didn't No, I don't think there had, I'm not sure there had to be bids, but I think the figure was $10,000 and if $10,000 could trigger a different process.
Right, so that was-
But this was more like, you know, going out and asking a couple of people for bids to-
Right.
-take care of, we need some benches, let's get some-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's go out and buy a few benches.
But that was a question I was actually never able to get an answer from, is that the proposal that I saw from that company that ended up doing the work was for $12,000, but they gave a 50% discount. So, the value actually of that asset is $12,000 because there's a 50% discount, which personally I think triggers that you have to have a bidding process. But I wasn't, I haven't been able to get any.
Any confirmation of that.
No.
Yeah.
So, that's why I think like does Property have a role in that, to like make sure that things are done, you know, correctly, that there is a public, like, what are the best practices for us?
Listen, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of the process, I was surprised to hear about it the way I heard about it.
Right.
I think you were too.
Right, so what-
We weren't, you know, I guess I would have, I would have hoped to have a process that would have said, "Hey, guys, guess what? We're going to do a website."
Right, right.
And, and I, "We think it's a great idea and these are the people I think we would like to involve." You know, the business community, the consumers who-
Right.
-come and pay taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And have a different process and the councilors would have been involved in that.
Anything that, yes.
I think, yeah.
But-
Does, no, no, mayor has to do that, I don't think.
Right, 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 but just-
I don't think there was a requirement.
But I'm just using that like as an example.
As an example, right.
If we're saying that that object is an asset, is that, is that an object that would have gone through the Property Subcommittee? Like, is that type of asset falling under Property Subcommittee? I mean, clearly both-
Not under, not under anything that's, in terms of historic way the Council has been.
Right.
Now, if we, if we were to say that, I think the Council would have to say, it wouldn't be the, the Council would have to say, listen, we as a Council are going to legislate a proposal that says, we're going to have an ordinance that if the mayor does, you know, spends X number of dollars, for example, or operates under this function that we're creating a new ordinance, or a rule of the Council. I'm not sure that a rule of the Council could be by the mayor in this case.
I'm just using that as an example because it is a process.
And I'm not saying it any, I wasn't just using that. I'm thinking more broadly than it's one specific use.
No, I'm using, I'm using it as an example because I do think, you know, a handful of the City Councilors did feel like marginalized by that process. So, how do we ensure that that doesn't happen again?
I would, I would think the first thing to do would be to have a conversation directly with the person who made the decision. And, right.
Done.
To have the conversation.
Done.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I feel you're, you're concerned about this and for the process, because, because that would be, that would be the first thing.
So, I didn't put-
And the second thing would be to write some sort of letter to discuss the subject. I don't know if you've personally done so or need to-
No.
-or need to talk about it here.
No.
But that, that's the next level and then maybe the level beyond that would be, I'll go, and some of us go to dinner or something and talk about it again and try to do this or confront at a, at a, at a public meeting.
Right.
Bring the subject up and, and I'm certainly happy to join you on that because I, I would like to see as much of the collaborative process as possible.
Right.
And I think I hear that's what you're saying.
I just want the best practices for the city, like so that people could, you know, they know that these things are happening and that, you know, we're able to access information and that City Councilors are, you know, involved, that are, that are part of the process. I mean, weeks go by, you know, we don't hear anything of anything, you know?
And I, I hear you and I, and I-
I mean, not that I think we're doing all sorts of crazy, you know, complicated things, but, you know.
No, but on occasion, something comes up and where did that come from?
We, we have an idea, yeah.
Yeah, how, maybe, maybe we think it, I certainly had lots of ideas for a website that-
Yeah.
I, if I had known that that's where we were headed, I would have, I would have talked more about-
Yeah. No, I'm staggered every time it's like, you know, occasionally it's like, oh, no, we need to do that.
Yeah.
Now we ask questions. All right, so anyway, "It shall be the duty of the Property Committee to consider all matters concerning real property and personal property when purchased and disposed of." Do we use the word assets in there or is Property going to cover it?
You might say, "Or other municipal assets."
Mm-hmm.
Real, real, real property, personal property and other municipal assets.
Okay, I can make the edit here if you want.
If you try that and I may try this. Oh, you're editing, okay. Other municipal assets.
I think that, I think this here that I'm highlighting.
Okay. Counselor Hayes is highlighting on her iPhone-
Which says-
-into my computer here and this is-
To undertake overall management of the Council's property at the stage of acquisition or disposal, oversee legislative tasks related to the above. I think that needs to be in there as a standalone because it concerns like how we deal with real property and, you know, this whole list of city, real property that we own. I mean, this is really interesting.
I would change from Council's property to City's property, Municipal's property, first of all.
Okay.
Because the Council doesn't have, we don't have any property. We don't have a desk, we don't have a chair, we don't have an office-
Right.
-in a city. We don't have a computer. These are all our own personal items. Overall management of municipal property. Maybe I should, I would like to bring to you some documentation. Have you seen the documentation talking about some, outlining some of the Council's role regarding acquisition or disposal?
You mean in the City Council polls?
No, in, in, in previous legal opinions.
No.
Let me get, let me, let me make a note to get that to you. I think that may be-
Where would I find those documents?
I'll send them to, I mean, I, the clerk might have copies, but-
Public documents that don't have access to.
Um...
"It shall be the duty of the Property Committee to consider all matters concerning real property and personal property when purchased and disposed of." So, at the end, I, and I used it in the public safety as the, the mission of the mayor wrote these kind of public safety, but like, these kind of Property Committees to provide a democratic and transparent matter coordination oversight in the following.
In the following, I'm not sure whether that fits it.
No, go at the beginning, you know? Instead of it saying, "It shall be the duty," it would say, "The mission of..."
I kind of like that. Let me, let me think about that for a minute.
Do you want to, up there so you can see it?
Yeah, go ahead. I, I kind of like that. Whoops, you highlighted everything, be careful.
I did it. I just wanted to make sure that, I just kinda wanted to get, I mean, one font so it's easier to read. Which I feel that.
Do you want to read this for the record since the public can't see what we're looking at as we make our edits and continue along? Just to be transparent.
Yeah, totally, absolutely. So what we have is the role of the property subcommittee, that was the task that we were asked to do. So what we have is the mission of the East Hampton Property Subcommittee is to provide in a democratic and transparent manner coordination oversight in the following. Real property, personal property and other municipal assets, including purchase, lease, rental, management, uh, record keeping, utilization, disposition, acquisitions and other matters as may be referred. The committee shall also undertake overall management of the municipal properties at the stage of acquisition or disposal and to oversee legislative taxes related to the above.
Okay, so, just a technical, I'm not sure we need purchase and acquisition at the same time. I don't think they mean that many different things. Purchase or acquisition, proposal.
We have that in there twice, two sentences.
No, we have purchase and acquisition in the same sentence. In the first paragraph.
Okay.
And suggest dropping the second one.
Done.
Right. The, the next parag, I'm pretty comfortable with that first paragraph, the way it looks right now.
Me too.
Uh, second paragraph, the committee shall also undertake overall manag, I'm not sure we have a manage, overall management function of municipal properties.
Yeah, I don't remember where that came from either.
Because...
And I don't understand what the legislative tasks related to the above would actually be. Can't take an example of that. It doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
Right.
But I don't know where that statement came from.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't come from me.
Do you wanna lose this second bit?
I'm, I'm thinking of losing the second paragraph because I don't sure that, that...
I think...
Because I don't think we have a management function. We, we can oversee management policies, but I think that would be covered under management in the first paragraph.
Yeah.
It says management, we, we, we can review policies.
No, I, I just cut that out and I agree with you. I think that's a very good succinct statement and it is a mission statement, which is what we are charged to do.
Right.
And I do think it's, um, I think we've made some progress with adding the other municipal assets.
Let's go up here and see if I can do that.
Oh, yeah, everything under that hashtag is not part of it.
I just moved.
Yep.
Okay.
You deleted it.
And I, I don't think there's anything else there. All right, so that's, that looks pretty good. I, I would be comfortable either entertaining a motion to accept this or we could wait till we get pegged and I'm not, I'm not, I, I think, I think that might be a good idea just to see if we can get pegged before.
I think we should submit it to Dan.
I think, I think, I think Dan would love to see it, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think we should submit it to Dan. What we did at property is we actually didn't vote on it because we figured at the full city council we're gonna vote on all of them again. So we all...
So at, at, at pub, at public safety?
Right.
Okay. We said property.
Oh, sorry, a public safety. Yeah, we put it together and we sent it to the, and we said, okay, we wrote our statement because it's, you know, it's basically, um, it's a working project. It's, it's not necessarily something that we need to all do. So I think peg is...
I'm comfortable and I think, I, I think peg would be, I'm not gonna speak for her, but I think we were comfortable with where we were at, but we had to make sure that we addressed it with you. Because you had some additional concerns.
Right, and these, these are gonna be discussed at full city council. So if there's anything that she needs to bring up, that we, we do have an opportunity to do that.
Then why don't we entertain a motion to, just to give it one more time?
Yeah, if you want to do this in the forum motion, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so...
So a motion to accept the role of the property subcommittee, um, mission statement to...
Should we call it the subcommittee or the committee?
I'm fixing it right now. Or do you want to fix it?
No, go ahead, it's good.
Okay, the role of property subcommittee, uh, motion to accept the role of this, role of the property subcommittee has follows. For submission to council risk in regards to the definition of the subcommittee for the roles of...
You want to read it, you know, out loud?
Yep. The mission of the East Hampton Property Subcommittee is to provide in a democratic and transparent manner coordination and oversight in the following. Real property, personal property and other municipal assets, including purchase, lease, rental, management, record keeping, utilization, disposition and other such matters as may be referred.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
You have an official item to record here, okay, good.
I know, I've got that going on another document.
All right, good. There is a meeting coming up in an hour, or at the top of the hour at one o'clock, so, in this room, so we should vacate before then.
Um, is there anything else on the agenda that you wanted to talk about?
I did want to send you a copy of, I, I sent you a copy of the, of the Conway School Graduate Program in Sustainable Landscape and Planning and Design. That was for Parsons Street School.
Can you just hold on one second while I transfer this document? Because I don't...
Oh, sure.
I, I'm just, you know, I'm doing two things at the same time.
No, no, no.
Which I'm usually really good at.
Listen, I, I'm sensitive to that.
No, no, it's all, I got it. Oops.
So while you're doing, well, gee, while you're doing that? Yeah, I'll be sent. You're transferring?
No, I got, no. I just, I, I had started a draft email, that's where I was keeping everything.
Oh, yeah, so let me...
But, um, I just had...
I'm gonna try to save this too at the same time and see if that, oh, gosh, that just looked up just beautifully.
Right?
Wow, look at that. Today, who's the third? You think you'd single the file earlier? Party, party, okay, no, it's the third.
My whole morning was spent on doing things for August, so I am not...
Oh, so you're not into, not into May, okay.
And that isn't the right time on the clock up there, I'm like, okay, I don't know what's going on.
I have twelve forty six, okay, good, so...
Yeah, that says ten or twelve. All right, so that is in there for the minutes.
That's good. I just wanted to note that I, I've sent to you a copy of the Conway School Graduate Program in Sustainable Landscape Planning and Design's work on the Parsons Street School land.
Oh, right.
Twenty-eight page report.
This is from the Conway School?
That was from the Conway School of Sustainable Landscape and Planning and Design.
When, from when?
From several months ago.
Why would we know?
Or a month ago, and, and it, it, it's, it's new. It's, it's, it's a new...
What? New thing happening in my district that we're working with that you never hear anything about.
Right.
Hate it. I'm just gonna start something crazy. So what is, what is it? It's a plan for Parsons Street School?
It's a plan for Parsons Street School that isn't definit, I mean, it certainly isn't definitive. It just was a student, it's a master's degree, the level student, looking at the, at the, at the plan and coming, looking at the site and going to propose... Don't know how that was handled. You'd have to ask the person to whom it was submitted, who, who requested the, the interaction with the Conway School.
Right.
That, that was the, the city planner.
I mean, I'm sure it's nothing, I'm sure it's nothing nefarious, but it's just once again, there's something that's going on in your district.
Well, certainly going on in your district that, that has to do with...
That has to do with city property.
Now, now, I think, I think to be fit, to be fair, to be fair on the other side,
Mm-hmm.
to, to our overwork department, I, they do a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For two people, I gotta say, if we look at our neighboring community's department, uh, they, they have staff and, and substaff and, and other staff in other cities. And we really have only one. So this is a student, master's degree student.
So it's just student work.
Work that they did to look at the site as, and, and give, give suggestions to our community. Uh, and, and I think it's our role to look at that and then open it up to the public for further input, but I, oh, and I, and I think that's appropriate and I think this committee could certainly handle that.
Did you say you were gonna send them to me?
I did, I did, yeah. Uh, but I think, one of the concerns I have is we need to, as we discuss it, I think we need to be fully cognizant that there is no current method for, for funding any maintenance of additional parks. So that would have to be something that would have to be worked through.
Right.
By the group, any group that would, that would say, hey, listen, this is a great plan, let's apply for a grant and put in a new park, well, how are we gonna take care of it?
Right, but now we're in a position where it's like if a grant comes up, there's a plan already in place.
There is a plan in place that...
But has zero public input at all in any way, shape or form and created by somebody who doesn't even live in the community. You know what I mean?
At least we're fir, I, I, I have to say, at least we're further ahead than no plan at all.
Right, right.
And we can use this as a base to continue, but I, I agree with you to have public input into a plan and further delineation of the plan or definition.
Like, why did it become a public green space? Like, there were a lot of other ideas that the community was interested in and having there.
There were, I, I think if you read the, and, and you haven't had any time to look at the report, I, I think if you take a look at it, you, you may have further questions and it may be something that you should put on a agenda, but I wanted you to be aware that there was a plan. That I found out about by asking, yeah. All right, so, moving on just a, a bit, the other issue that you had brought up and asked about was for you to investigate something, an abandoned housing initiative.
Yeah, absolutely. There needs to be public oversight for that, especially if it's a position where the city is gonna come after people's refunds or, you know, put their house up for liens or knock their house down or take their house, like there has to be some sort of public oversight. It has to be done in a public way, I would think.
It is, in terms of my reading of, of the legislation, we're talking about, uh, mass general laws, chapter one eleven, section one twenty-seven I and one twenty-seven J, which involve a municipality asking the attorney general's office to step in and look into who owns a property because oftentimes if you get an abandoned property and you don't know who the owner is, nobody's really taking any responsibility. The attorney general's office has resources to come in and sort through all of that. And then we have our, our public health department can take a role and say there is a safety issue to the public, threat to the public of one sort or another involving public safety. And then we can further look at identifying the people, identifying what options are available, talking, but it starts with really the community asking and it's really the mayor's office that takes that weird role in, in asking. So I think we have, we have, as a counselors, if there's something in our district or anywhere in the city, I think any one of us could go to the mayor and say, hey, listen, I think you need to address this particular property.
See, and I think that question, we should address this particular property should go to a city council because they're a representative government and that way you'd get a fairer, um, application of that particular law. I mean, we all know there's properties in downtown that this could be looked at, but because they're wealthy and well-known individuals, it probably won't happen. Whereas it's an individual who doesn't have the resources to kind of come at this, that they will get. Like, I, I think if there's one individual who's applying this and being able to use this tool, because it's a, it's a pretty impressive big tool, that there has to be some public oversight so that this tool is applied fairly.
Are you saying that it might not be applied fairly?
I'm, I'm saying there's the potential that it could. That it, there's a public resource where it's like, you know what, that, you know, if a neighbor gets a complaint or somebody gets a complaint and somebody comes to us and puts like, we're looking at like one-two-five USA Main Street. And then the city council would be like, okay, yeah, I think that's an okay one to pursue, you know? And then there could be ones where people could come, like the public could just want to be like, you know what, my neighbor's not doing this thing, can you take a look at this property? And whereas it's not just one person doing it, so and so, we're gonna let that go.
Did you wanna communicate with the attorney general's office to see how other communities handle this?
Yeah, I can do that.
Maybe, maybe there is a role for the council, maybe other communities have council and legislative authority? And then we could pursue this at another time and I think...
I just think if it's something, you, you're talking about dealing with a person's house. Like, that's a really, really important thing. And I think that there has to, it's good and best practices and just good form to have, you know, city counselors are representative government, that's a form of representative government for constituents. And even if that constituent is behind and that's an abandoned property and I think like, that they still have some representation in this process because it's a big deal to bring in the attorney general and have that happen, you know? Like, you don't want a mistake and you certainly don't want that tool used unfairly. Like, I think there needs to be public oversight for that. It's a, I, I mean, I think it's a big deal. I think it's a really big deal. I mean, it's a pretty powerful weapon. Which is good for us as a community to be able to do.
I see it as, from, from, I look at this primarily from the community's perspective and the safety issue of a property being abandoned.
Absolutely.
And usually by the time it gets there, the person who is in this situation doesn't have the resources to fix or maintain the project. But on the other hand, on the other hand, they may, they may have, they may have resources. And I think if, if there's a role that you think there other communities have or there should be, a abandoned housing initiative.
All right.
All right, so, let, let's leave that one.
I'll call the A.J.
All right, and, and see if you can find out some more about how other communities handle this and whether they're visible. Good. And I think that pretty much gets us through everything that we talked about the last time. And we have something to present, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move it.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
That, twelve fifty-six.